Good afternoon, and welcome to Spokane City Council's Study Session. We're going to cover a few issues: a contract agreement between the city and Phoenix Counseling Services; discussion of regional homeless authority; an ARPA update; potential resolution on interim city attorney; and then we're going to have a study session, excuse me, executive session on collective bargaining issues. And then when we get done with that, we'll go into a formal legislative session. So, we don't have roll call for study session, we will at the legislative session. But Mr. Delaney, if you'd like to come down and explain to us the Phoenix Counseling Services.
Thank you very much, Council. Howard Delaney from Municipal Court. I'd like to first thank you for allowing us to add this to your agenda on short notice. Secondly, I'd like to apologize for the administrative shortcomings that made you have to add this on such short notice. We've corrected that process internally, and it should not occur again. The Phoenix Counseling contract is basically a contract related to a grant from the administrative offices of the courts for a domestic violence intervention court. And the contract is actually for domestic violence intervention treatment services through Phoenix Counseling. It was a result of an RFP. We conducted, there were two responsive parties. Phoenix, first off, their response was much better, and they were the number one selection by quite a bit. So, this is the end result contract, which allows us to purchase those services and provide vouchers for the people going through our DVIT court. So, any questions I can answer?
Could you just briefly talk about the DVIT court, and what's different, new and improved, and why we're excited about this? And I know we've gotten lots of grant money from the feds and the state about it.
We had previously not had a dedicated domestic violence court in the city. We saw grant funds become available from the administrative office of the courts, and we also saw some federal grant funds available, which we've also applied for. We rewarded the funds through the administrative office of the courts. A domestic violence intervention court is literally a court designed to intervene with people who have a propensity to commit domestic violence, usually not the one-off events, but with patterns of these. They go through a series of scientific assessments to make sure they're appropriate. They agree to participate in the program. It's between one and two years, depending on how they rank in the assessment scores and the sorts of treatments they need. And then they attend these domestic intervention treatment programs, again, the services we're contracting for. And those are defined by the Washington State Wax and have different program requirements specified by the administrative rules for the treatment they need to provide and the related services. The goal, of course, is having those individuals recognize their course of conduct is an issue, and then take affirmative steps to change their way they think about their relationships and how they respond to pressures within domestic relationships. And the goal is simply to break that cycle of offense. Of course, as with all the therapeutic courts, if they choose to stop participating, to violate the handbook, the rules that they must operate on, then they're subject to sanction up to and including serving out the rest of their gross misdemeanor term, which can be up to 364 days per count. So, that's the essence of a domestic violence treatment court and how it will work.
And this particular treatment modality, my understanding is that the evidence that's coming back is that it's far more effective than what we've done historically.
Far more effective is what the current evidence is coming back as. And again, as with all our therapeutic courts, in fact, our therapeutic court teams right now are at the RISE program in Houston, where all the latest literature, programs, sciences are reviewed. Because you need to be able to not assume you're just going to do the same thing for the next 10 years. As the science and the metrics develop, we need to develop with them. Speaking of metrics, we've already designed the metrics for this program so we can determine if it's being successful. They're being built into our criminal justice software E-series, which you've all heard a lot about. So, again, with every one of these new courts, we not only want to set them up correctly, run them under the existing science, but we design and then are able to produce the metrics to show if we're moving the needle or not.
Councilmember Kinnear.
What happens to the domestic court dropouts?
Excuse me?
What happens to the domestic court?
They're subject to simply execution of the sentence. By the time they're in this court, the way it's set up, they will already entered a plea to the charge as part of entering the court. They will have received a sentence. Participation in this program is a condition of that sentence. And if they simply fail to participate, then they're subject to execution of the original, up to and including execution of the original sentence.
Well, I was thinking more they're participating but not succeeding. So, they reoffend, or so how many chances do they get before it's?
With all therapeutic courts, you may expect some backsliding. For instance, if they also have substance abuse issues as one of the drivers of their pattern of domestic violence, they may be enrolled in a treatment program. We find out through the ankle brace that we have on them that they're consuming alcohol. Most of that's subject to initial internal sanctions, and only if they don't correct that, that includes up to including flash sanction, a day in jail here, a day in jail there. If they don't correct that behavior, then they're violated, and they go, come out of the program altogether. Recurrence of a domestic violence event, another assault charge would normally, absent some extraordinary circumstance, which doesn't even come to mind at the moment, subject you to being terminated from the program. So, the one thing you can't do is inflict additional harm and expect to stay in this program. So...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Would you like me to come back for the legislative session?
I don't think you need to come back. We'll let you know.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Howard.
Next thing I wanted to discuss was, or have a discussion on regional homeless authority presentation yesterday. And not everyone was there, but most people were there. The documents have been circulated. Basically, they're in a, everybody in the, all the governments in the region are in a 60-day explore, negotiate things. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Bingle with his initial thoughts, because he's been sitting in on the every-other-weekly leadership. And then, my understanding is, this was the presentation of the independent group and their recommendations, but now the negotiations start. But the one thing they did to try to get us ahead of the process was come up with draft documents consistent with their recommendations, just so you're working from a document, not that that's, it's not a sign it or don't sign it situation. But I'll start off with Councilmember Bingle, and then just have a little bit of discussion on it, so that when Councilmember Bingle and I are talking to them, and everyone can talk to them, but we can kind of carry those forward. But, Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I've been, I've been in these every-other-week meetings, you know, for the last three months, and a lot has been discussed from the different jurisdictions. One of the things that was encouraging was seeing even the smaller cities, Medical Lake, Cheney, starting to want to be involved as well, wanting to be represented in this. Because, again, when we talk about a regional collaboration, it can't be city, county, and valley. It's, I mean, it's everybody in the area. So, we talked about a number of different options throughout this process, the governance structure being the one thing that I think we firmly agreed on being the PDA, being the best vehicle for us to do what we needed to do. I have a lot of optimism for this going forward. I also have a lot of hesitation, because while I see the great value for the region in getting a regional agreement done, everybody sort of has hangups on where's the money coming from, what is the governance, or not the governance structure, who chooses the board members, right? And only five of those are really defined, or semi-defined, which is small cities representative, valley, two from the city and one from the county. Those five are somewhat defined. And then we have areas that we're wanting people, you know, lived experience, public housing, private housing, public safety, you know, medical field. I can't remember all eight, but there's diversion services. There's, I think it's a good group of the eight in bringing people in to where the majority on the board are subject matter experts and not elected officials. But understanding that this issue is one that is so politically charged, having political representatives on there may provide some value, probably will provide some hardships, but probably provide some value. Because while I know everybody's intent has been, let's de-politicize the issue, I don't believe that's possible. I think it's a fool's errand. I think what you have to do is you have to overcome the politics of the issue. And so, that is a much harder job, because we, with our varying interests that we're representing and the varying groups that we're representing, finding common ground on that might be, might be very small common ground at first, but can grow into something much more. And so, as we've discussed, we've heard a lot of, a lot of really good feedback. I think that there's something there, but the next 60 days is going to be really important. I intend to be calling for joint meetings, and I'm trying to lead that charge. I've been on the phone all last couple days, trying to figure out, valley, what do you need to be involved? Because we need you to be involved. County, what do you need to be involved? Because we need you to be involved. Medical Lake, what do you need? We need you involved. Trying to get everybody to feel as if this is their baby and not the city of Spokane's baby, and basically begging others for money, because that's just not going to work. They need to feel as if they're valued members and that their opinion is going to matter at the table. And so, I've been doing a lot of work on that over the last couple days, and I think that it's, it's possible. I don't know that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it's likely that we get in agreement, but I think it's possible. And so, I'm doing everything I can to try and get everybody at the table to feel as if, that they matter and that we truly want them there, and that their, their thoughts aren't going to be brushed aside. And then it's going to be big city of Spokane just leading the charge, and everybody else is along for the ride. So...
Councilmember Kinnear.
Could you talk a little bit about, talk about money?
Yes.
Okay, so, yes. But the other conversation, almost an elephant in the room, is where are we locating facilities?
Yeah.
And right now, the preponderance of facilities are within the Spokane city limits.
Yes.
The people who are in those facilities aren't necessarily from Spokane.
Correct.
So, how do we get past that narrative that everything should be located in the city of Spokane? And I hear so often, well, that's where the services are. We can locate services anywhere. So, how do we talk about that without getting people in corners?
Yes.
Bring them along.
So, first, on the money, you're absolutely right, and this is going to be a huge sticking point. So, some things that were proposed were, hey, city of Spokane, you fully fund TRACK for year one, and give up your $15.90 to this organization, which is obviously a hard no for us, right? You know, if you are not also taxing your people at the same level that we are, we're not bringing these dollars in. So, just know, for us, that's a non-starter, absolutely not going to happen. But when you're talking about money, what we're trying to do is we're trying to pool all of the entitlement dollars together, things that we're all receiving at a similar clip that we can bring in, and it's a somewhat fair distribution of the monetary burden in the region. It is a huge sticking point, though, because I know one of the big hesitations for the valley is they don't want to give up their CDBG dollars, because they don't only use it for homelessness, they also use it for sewer projects and other things, other capital projects that are a big deal for them, which is fine. I think we can overcome that. We don't necessarily have to have everybody bring all the money all right away. I think the better idea for us is to bring the dollars that we can all agree on, and then have some small wins there, and build the relationships and the trust, because there has been a, you know, a 20-year period of building distrust with, you know, this, with the city of Spokane Valley. And at times, the city of Spokane not acknowledging the fact that they are giving money to these efforts. And so, I think that money is going to be a huge sticking point, but I think there are pools of money that we could all agree on, where we keep our $15.90, unless the county does it countywide, then we'll give ours up, that's fine. But the money is a sticking point, but I think that there's, there's pools that we can all agree on putting into this. I think another big issue is going to be staffing, because what has been proposed is that the staffs of the different jurisdictions, again, no longer necessarily work for the city of Spokane or the county, whatever. They are all employees of this, of this PDA, which, this is why I'm not a fan of the two-year agreement. For me, it's got to be a five-year or a 10-year agreement, because if we're asking people to have this substantial change in their life, we need to give them more security than a two-year where somebody can get out after a year. Your last question was, everything is located in the city of Spokane. That will likely stay in the first few years of that agreement, because we've already invested so much in TRACK and some of these other facilities. But moving forward, if we do have a valley agreement and a county agreement, I think it's far more likely that we do start to see newer additions to the system, not necessarily being cited in the city of Spokane. But TRACK already exists. It already is serving a purpose for the county, and it seems to make the most sense for now, and that doesn't mean for five years, but for now, that is the facility that's already been set up for this.
So, I had the opportunity to be at that meeting yesterday morning, and I thought it was very aspirational.
It is.
And there's some good goals there and some places we could start. My first thing was they wanted something to be done by the end of the year. I thought that's pretty quick for municipalities to make this type of agreement and get it kicked off by January 1. That was one. A lot of the monies that we receive were not on a January to December 31 cycle, and that seemed to have been missed kind of in the conversation when they talked about these other funding sources, which many run from July 1 to June 30. So, that was missed. And, you know, we did have an incident there of a person who was having an episode, which really was in real time of the issues we're trying to address. What was a little disappointing was all the people, or many of the people who had came up with the structure, was afraid of the homeless person, which is what we experienced in our community. The person wasn't violent, she was just having an episode. And so, people immediately got afraid. You could, it was almost palpable in the room. People didn't know what to do. And then Sunshine, who comes down here with us.
Great.
Every Monday night, walks up there, puts her arm around her, walks her out the door. I mean, so that was extremely powerful. So, what I was looking for is, where... So what I was looking for is, where is the support to sustain the existing services we have now? People who are already doing the work. We haven't had that type of analysis as to what do we need to help them to be a part of this whole regional thing, because it's not the entity that's not going to do the work, it's going to be all these providers. Let's be real about that.
Yes.
Who's going to be doing the work? So, many of them told me afterwards they had not been at the table. There had been conversations, but there's conversations and then there's engagement. And I think there was, there's, there hasn't been consistency on what that really looks like. Two particular providers, providers who do heavy lifting said they had never been invited or they'd only been talked to three times. Well, those people are critical players in this space. And so then how do we really scoop them up into that? And, my last point, as we set this up, this, who will be in charge during this whole transition period? Because to find an executive director for something like this is not going to happen overnight. So for six months, maybe nine, who will be running the show? And we really didn't get down to that level of engagement.
Yes. Okay, so, a couple of things. So, the big four that I pulled out of there is that it's, getting something done by January 1 is incredibly ambitious, and you're not wrong. I think what we've all recognized is that, again, another winter is coming, and we're trying to get something done before or as soon as possible because another winter is coming, and we're trying to be effective for this community. And so, it, it may be too quick, I will fully acknowledge that. This is where I think that we, as the jurisdictions, throughout this negotiation process, will find out if we can actually get it done. If not, what I don't want to do is I don't want to get something going that's, that's set up to fail. I want us to do it right, but when we were down in Houston, and what we saw in that video yesterday is Mark Eichenbaum, who's the guy that we really learned a lot from, he said there was a lot of us where we were building the boat while we were going, and that exact quote was in the, in the presentation yesterday. And so I think there's a few principles that we'll need to be able to agree on early, and then some of the other details will be worked out as we're going on. Is it ideal? Absolutely not. I would rather have a perfect thing to present right away, but I don't know that we're going to have something perfect to present right away. On Sunshine, you were absolutely right. I was so impressed by Sunshine in that moment, she did such a great job dealing with Rachel was, was the woman's name. And I would actually move, or not, I'm not making motion, but Sunshine, I think, would be a great person who could be on that board because there is a spot for somebody with lived experience. And I think Sunshine could do a great job in that position, and I think she demonstrated it yesterday, so shout out to Sunshine. Service providers not being at the table, I, I, I don't know exactly all the conversations that were happening, but one of the things we do need to do is we do need to understand from the service providers how the work is going to get done. But pooling those dollars, I think, is going to help us to be more efficient with how those dollars are going out, the metrics that are being used, everything like that. And when it comes to the board, there is a bit of a conflict to have a lot of service providers on that board considering they're going to be receiving the funding. And one of the things we learned down in Houston is that the service providers were not on the board because, again, there's an inherent conflict. And so we do need to listen, we do need to hear from them. I don't necessarily know if board representation is, is wise, but we absolutely do need to be learning from them. And then on the executive director, you are absolutely right, we don't, we don't know those details yet. We don't even know how the board members would be selected. Those are things that are going to be negotiated in this interim process. And if, in the end, we as the City of Spokane don't feel as if, you know, it is a satisfactory process, then we don't sign on board. But these are all things that I believe we can negotiate in, you know, the next 60 days or at least, you know, again, I'm new, that might still be ambitious, but I, that's still the goal is to get it done in 60 days because, again, winter, winter is at our doorstep, so.
Councilmember Stratton?
So, I just have observations.
Yes.
You don't need to address them if you don't want to. The first thing was, I was surprised at the beginning when they announced it as the consortium or the, for housing, homelessness, housing, safety, and?
Health.
No.
Health.
Housing, health and safety, yeah, I think is the.
So, that made me a little nervous.
Yeah.
That it, it's expanded like that. I was also a little nervous by some of the comments from the stage about, we all know about those pots of money that are used, that CHHS has to be very careful with.
Yes.
How they use it. And this person thinking that, well, we can use them for different purposes, we can get, we can do that. That concerned me. I was also concerned, just as a council member who's been here for a while, not only were there a couple of people on the stage, there were people in the audience that were part of the whole Shrek consolidation. That was, compared to this, that was a relatively small effort if you compare. And that wasn't done well, and employees didn't come out on top of that. So, I, I think that we need to keep a watchful eye on that because as much as everybody goes on and on about how Shrek is now and how great it's been, whatever, there were employees that were lost along the way and shouldn't have been. So, I, I'm very concerned about what we're doing with employees. And then, the last piece for me is just something that bothers me. We hear it all the time, where people stand up and say, you've got to take the politics out of this, just take the politi, it's kind of shaming a little bit, right? It's all of us sitting there.
Totally.
We're trying not to be political. If we're going to take the politics out of it, then as, as or if this continues, there needs to be a very strong statement in all of the rules of the board or those people that are planning it, that they don't make political contributions while they're active. I don't like to see that because it immediately, whether it's something, you know, somebody I support or somebody I don't, I don't care. I just don't think it's proper that we have people right now who are on that committee or on that, that group of three, who are supporting political candidates. If there's, that's just not the place for it. So I would make sure that whatever happens down the road, that there's an ethical statement or some kind of a statement that says, if we're really going to keep the politics out of it, it includes that as well.
Yes. I, I want to address two of those things. Your concern for the employees, I share. Like I said, I don't want people's entire lives to be uprooted and then possibly in a year that they would have to do that again. I don't think that's fair to them, which, again, is why I'm a hard no on the two-year agreement, because it doesn't seem to make sense as, you know, for us and our employees to bring that in there. That's, that's too much. And then on the, don't make political contributions, I'm totally okay with that. Like I said, I don't think we can remove it, but I think we can overcome it in some ways, and I think this is one way that we can help to, to overcome it. So, I'm totally on board with both of those.
Thanks. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I guess I just have a whole lot of questions, need a whole lot more detail on the whole thing, but a couple of things that really jump out at me. One, the comment that we're going to, in two years, actually 18 months, reduce homelessness by 40% and then not tell us how we're going to do it. I just think you have to explain, that is something that is so ambitious to make that promise, and it really felt like it was a promise. I think you have to have details. I mean, I think if they had an answer to that, there'd be a whole lot of cities paying them a whole lot of money for that, for that answer. And so I think that has to be discussed upfront. The headline in the paper today started off, 40% reduction in two years, the public is going to have expectations. And that is sort of setting this up to where if they can't meet those expectations and it does come to fruition, that there may be a loss of public support down the road. And so that's, that's very concerning to me. The funding is, is another big piece. I'm, I'm very concerned, they want a lot of pots of money that have multiple uses, as was explained for the valley, but there's a lot of small communities that really rely on those CDBG dollars. We rely, we can build sidewalks, we can do a lot of things with CDBG. And, and so to give that up would be a substantial harm to the city. And so I think we have to review all those financial pieces. And then the other part is, we have to make sure that, is this actually going to create an accountable, efficient, and economically sustainable system? You know, we've seen what's happened in King County, and that has gone the exact opposite direction of that. And as somebody who very much believes that we need a regional effort here to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish, I think that that is something that we have to consider. And so one of the comments yesterday, and of course, you know, it's very early in setting this up, but one of the comments was that every single person currently employed in homeless services would be moved into a new job. There would be no changes. And we, we're talking about five cities that would be joining this, that's a, that's a lot of employees, and I just have to assume there would be efficiencies in the system. And so I'm wondering, where are those efficiencies? What do those look like? What's the cost savings that the region, the city is going to experience? And then what is the authority of this regional system? As was mentioned by Councilmember Stratton, they have vastly expanded from what we had agreed to a couple of months ago. It's now going to cover housing and health. Well, what's the interaction between them and the health district? What's the interaction between them and our zoning laws? Are they going to have some ability, or are they going to lobby for some ability to override our zoning laws down the road? Immense questions, none of it's addressed, and I think we have to have a whole lot of clarity on all of that. And so, I don't think we're close at this point, but I, but I am optimistic that we can get there. It's probably going to take a little bit longer than we'd like, and I think it's going to require a lot more consensus building amongst those. And so I think we have to have those joint meetings with all of our councils, talking things through. And I have talked to members of other bodies who are considering joining this, and much of what I have said, they share the same concerns. And so I think we just have to get to a point where we, a place where we have a lot more detail, and we're able to tell the public the how we're going to do this. And so, that, that to me is kind of what, what was missing. But I am optimistic, I mean, I do think we can get there. It's probably not by January, especially with our current budget situation in the city, we can't be giving up pots of money in the next three months, that's for sure.
So I'll say on that, that was also the first that I'd heard that we were going to reduce homelessness by 40%, and that was, that was a little irritating to me because, again, what you said is exactly right. The public statements that we're making, I have no problem with stretch goals, I love stretch goals, right? Like, reach for the stars, go for it. But also there has to be some ability to follow through or at least get close to that number if, again, something that the, the public, you know, over the years, you know, promises have been made, things have been said, and then it's been almost impossible to follow through on some of the promises that have been made. This right here, to me, felt like too ambitious of a number if we're wanting the public to buy in on what we're doing. Totally agree on that. When it comes to accountability and efficiency in dollars, these are things that I know that all the representatives from the areas, I know that these are things that we at the city are working on. How do we be more accountable and more efficient? And I think with the, with the board that would be overseeing it, I think that we would have a solid group looking to be accountable and efficient with those dollars. Again, all the concerns are totally valid, there's a lot to be hesitant of right now, but there's, there's also a lot to be hopeful for, so.
I have a couple of comments, but seeing if there's any other?
Yeah, I think there needs to be a lot of clarity around the selection process of board members. That was asked, and it was just like, well, people can apply. And I'm like, and then who decides? Who's the deciding person that does it? Is it the three of them? Is it this work group? There's a lot of, I don't know, and that, that matters a lot.
Yep.
One thing that I think is still unclear, I, I support a lot of the guiding principles and ideas around them, but I don't know exactly what it means. For example, it says, treatment is often a priority and detention remains a necessary accountability tool. So I don't know what that really means and what role detention will play, especially because the name now includes safety as part of the name and their goals. I didn't really know what that meant. I don't know if that's come up more.
Yeah. So, I think, so on your first thing about the board, totally agree. We have to know how the board is going to be selected, and that's not an answer that we've, we've gotten yet. And until we understand how that is, we can't move forward with it. I believe that's probably something that's going to be negotiated through the different jurisdictions. And so, very open to hearing what our thoughts are on that because, again, it's really important that it's not the county chooses all the board members, right? Can't be the valley choosing, can't be the City of Spokane choosing all of them. It has to be a collaborative effort, and so what does that look like? That's, that's up in the air. But it is, again, a very important question, and I'm glad that it's being asked because it matters. And then the housing, the health, and the safety, I think what, what we as a group were trying to do is just acknowledge the realities of the situation when it comes to homelessness. For a, for a good amount of folks who are homeless, housing is, is the answer. We need to get them housing. For a good amount of folks who are homeless, we need to get them mental health treatment or, or addiction treatments. We need to get those services. And then there is a group of, of folks who cause problems that are committing crimes. This is not every homeless person, obviously, this is just somebody committing a crime. And I think that it was, it would, it would be foolish to not acknowledge that that is an aspect of this. And so when we say housing, health, and safety, it's not that they're even all equally weighted because they aren't. Housing is probably the biggest portion of what we need in our, in our homelessness services, and so getting that built and built out quickly is a big deal. But I think it's just an honest acknowledgement of the situation. And so I don't have a problem with the three, but again, you know, this is not something that Jonathan Bingle signs, this is something that we as a city sign. And so I'm, you know, I welcome all the feedback, and this will all be things that happen in the, in the negotiations, so.
Yeah. And on top of that, going back to the name, right, it's housing, homelessness, health and safety, again, I still don't know what that means. And they're like, we're going to show big, and we're going to do it all. And I'm like, does that mean that you also want our public safety dollars to like enforce this stuff? Are we supposed to be turning over the police force to this PDA?
Right.
Like, I don't understand.
Yep.
What does that mean if they're going to be handling safety? Are they going to be coming up with policy proposals to send back to council on how we should do this? There's still a lot of uncertainty with the jail measure on the ballot this fall and the 40% of the funding that goes with that. Are they expecting that dollars from the jurisdictions? We still have had really no conversation about that, and it's almost July, and that's supposed to be on the ballot in November. I don't, I don't know of any, I know the counties had a discussion about their 60%, but I don't know any city that has had a conversation about what to do with the 40%.
Yeah.
That's almost half the, the tax dollars of a billion dollars.
Yeah.
That's concerning, so maybe they're looking at that as a potential revenue? I don't know. It seems like they have a lot of goals of what they want to do, and I don't know where that funding comes in and, and what are we obligated to pay already? We have, you know, our contracts and track that we're trying to fund, does that just get transferred over?
Yeah.
How's that going to work out?
Yeah.
So I, I've heard, and maybe Jonathan, you can comment, I, I've heard that the, the hope is that there would be a countywide version of 1590 passed, they would take all of those funds, and then they also want to essentially take, and they want to modify, I've heard they want to modify the jail proposal, and I can't remember the details of that, but, but essentially, the, the extraneous dollars, they want all to come to that, to the organization as well. So, basically, every, every pot of money, every source they, they want for the.
I think it'd be helpful for that to be clearly communicated of what they're expecting for funding and expenditures because we got none of that yesterday, and they haven't presented any of that. And I don't know how we can get on board with a governing structure without knowing any of the funding. I've even asked for the funding of this effort, of the collaboration in the website and all that funding, and that has not been clear either about how much this effort is. Someone had to pay for the convention center yesterday, that's not cheap, and we don't know where that funding's coming from. And they're asking for public dollars, I think that should be part of the, the public process.
Yep. Totally fair question about who's paying for it right now, how that's come about, totally fair. On the public safety, you know, it's, it's definitely not going to be that our, our police work for them, but what will, that will all be hammered out in the negotiations. But it is, what do we mean by safety? I think that's a very fair question, and we need to define that, right? There was something else that came up when it came about, oh yeah, funding structures. So, I know that there is a pitch right now to the county, instead of doing two tenths for the jail, do one tenth countywide for the 1590. If that were something that would happen, I would happily then have the conversation about, do we give our $15.90 to this organization to help, help them do it? But until it is countywide, that's a hard no, okay, for us. What the $15.90 also allow us to do is pay for some programming for, for mental health services and addiction services and things like that. So, the pitch to the county is, the one tenth would go for detention to build a bigger jail. The thing that the one tenth will not allow the county to pay for is services at the jail. So the idea is if we did 1590 in partnership with that, it sort of forces the hand of those services to be paid for. They have to be paid for because that's the only thing that the money can be done for. I don't know that the county is on board with that as, as it's currently made up. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure that's a, that's a no from them as currently stated. But it is something that I think is an intriguing option.
Yeah. Just a quick comment on the board development. When they were talking about the board structure and the board commitment, I'm thinking, that's a full-time job. Did everybody listen to what will be expected?
Yeah.
I don't know how you're going to get a volunteer who's working or a subject matter expert who's already in their own field to step up and do that work. We're all volunteers.
Yeah.
We all work. Boy, that's a heavy lift. The 1590 conversation is interesting, especially for the county, since we were beat up significantly when we did it councilmanically. I just want to throw that out there because I just want you to know, we took the hit when we did it, and boy, we were tarred and feathered for that. But now that money is out there and everybody wants to use it for services where before it's like, no way. Even our administration said, no, we're not going to support that. So I'm open, I'm glad they're open to that now because a few years ago, that was a hard no.
I would say open like this. It's not a, it's not a big open.
Oh, okay, okay. Just, just saying.
No, I, I totally agree with you. And just to put things into perspective, the, the millions of dollars that comes in from 1590 is roughly about the same amount of money that Houston uses, even though they're 10 times the size of us for their housing programs. So that, those millions of dollars is a significant amount of money that can be used to leverage housing. And the hope would be if, in the regional collaboration, if we were, if the county did decide to do the 1590 countywide, that's just more money that we can then bond against, leverage that to get housing going very quickly. So those conversations are happening. I wouldn't necessarily say that they're productive or unproductive, but they are the conversations that are happening.
So a few things. One, on the board, who selects the board members? Also, I think we all got a copy of the letter from the COC who says they would like to select the board members. And so that's, and the COC, of course, is made up of city, city of the valley, and so, you know, that's an intriguing idea. But that's just one thing. But I just wanted to sort of big picture and then get into negotiation points going down the road. But big picture is, I just want to point out that, that I think we're in a great place in the sense that now we have specifics to actually react against. So before, it was just like, okay, this regional thing, what does that mean? Nobody knew what it meant. And so I want to give a lot of credit to all the people who, who put together the proposal, even if they're pieces that we don't either understand or necessarily endorse. But we're just so much farther ahead to have that because we're reacting to something. And I get that it's an ambitious timeframe, but I'm really all for moving forward as fast as we can go. My big comment back to them is, I think for the initial inter-local agreement and concept is just going to have to shrink it a bit on the things that we, we're pretty confident there's a lot of agreement, like get that going, and then come back in round two to expand your mission and funding and things like that. I, I think that's probably the way to go because if we don't really get something started, I think there's danger that it won't. We could spend a couple of years working on the planning, and it's a little bit like the BOKA that we did on the housing, is we said, okay, well, we're going to get this going and we'll write the rules, or we'll flesh out the rules, but let's get going and let's get at least some housing going and then see what works and doesn't work. So I'm looking at it more that way. I won't be here to vote on it, but I strongly advocate trying to get something done in 60 days that everyone could sign off. It may not, I don't think it'll look like it was proposed, but I really endorse that. I think the, one thing I'll just mention on the employees, one of the concepts that they've talked about is that, and it could be for up to two years, is that the employees be loaned executives instead of regional authority employees. So they're still city employees, they've got their benefits, their retirement, and that's what I wanted to happen in Shrek the first time. And I had a interesting kind of joking conversation with Teresa Sanders about that because she was like, oh, they could be loaned executive. They could keep their paychecks from the same thing, their same benefits. And I'm like, uh, yeah, that's what I thought Shrek should be. But, so there is the possibility to do that. I think that would help on employees. And then over those two years, I think they would have more confidence that, oh, there is a place for me here. This is work, we've worked it out. We've worked out new potential union agreements, compensation agreements. So I think the loaned executive concept is a great way to go. A lot of, again, with a narrower footprint, a lot of the savings is just one entity writing contracts and actually streamlining. So we're not writing, right now, that, that slide they showed up there, I don't know, there were like 60 or 70 contracts getting written every year, and that takes staffing. And that's partly because there was two entities and partly that with even the entities, they had all these. And so I think that's where you get a lot of savings and that. And it's savings for the provider organizations as well. They're not having to do all these different RFPs. People know what's going on right now. One thing that benefit from this group already is that we actually saw a slide with all the pots of money. We've never been able to get that, even though we've requested it. So I think there is a lot of savings and potential effectiveness in doing that. I agree that the providers will need to be more engaged, but there is a little bit of chicken and egg here is that really the new, the new board of this entity, they're the ones that are supposed to come up with the plan. That plan is not going to get written before we go forward. And that's problematic for some people, like, mm, I don't really want to sign until I know if I agree with the plan. But, but that is the, the leap of faith if you get most of the guardrails in place, is you say, no, this group that has representation from the city and all these other places, if you, if you feel like the selection process is going to be fair, they're going to come up with that plan. That's the whole Houston model, and I think we should do that. I think on the housing, health, and safety, I would like to see that be more the second tier. I'd like this just be the homelessness response, and then those are areas that they work on as opposed to that. I think it, it is a little bit ambiguous right now. What do they mean by safety? I think everyone wants to feel safety, but I don't really think that they're going to be involved in policing, but I think they need to say that. Right now, there's room. And it's the same on the word detention. I'm like, I'm not even sure why you're addressing. We already have laws against crimes.
Yep.
In our jurisdictions. You don't need any more, and this group's not going to make any laws. Like, we have a response. Now, we have things that we're trying to do with focus our resources and leverage our resources, and, you know, we'll do that within the city. Is there some policy people that coordinate and talk with the various jurisdiction law enforcement? Of course. But kind of putting that work into that is there. The other thing on detention that was unclear is I was trying to, I couldn't understand, and I think you should really just take, take the word out one way or the other instead of trying to define it, but it was like, are you trying to change the laws of the state of Washington? Are you going with Mayor Adams, New York? Like, you can't do that in Washington. Like, there's a lot of stuff. All that said, everyone wants to feel safe. So I, I think that should be a strong component of helping, supporting safety. But I think you bite off a little more, and Councilmember Cathcart's worry, like, are you going to try to change our zoning? I don't think they are, but the very fact that you're worried about it based on that presentation is problematic. And so I just think it needs to, to dial back a little bit. Now, they've put it out, and, and kudos to them to putting something out. They're going to get feedback from us, all those places. They've recalibrated this multiple times in the last 90 days, and so I have confidence and trust in them that they will continue to do that. But that's why we wanted to have this conversation today. So all these concerns, I really think that what was proposed a little bit earlier was, hey, we're going to use the entitlement grant money, everybody's proportional share.
Yep.
Let's agree on that. I think that's the core of it. The 1590, I agree with everything said. I think we just put in the ILA that will match proportionally any 1590 money that the rest, other jurisdictions or the county comes up, like, okay, that's fine. And same for track. We don't have $10 million for next year for track right now. We might have $5 million. And so maybe we say year one, you mat, we'll match you authority, and then in '25, I think they were saying they're going to be ready. But I, those things need to be figured out. But just to say, oh, that's inconvenient for us to have fun track, that's not going to work. But I think the approach should be lean in, and I've said this a long time, to these other jurisdictions of like, I am so interested and excited that you're interesting to even come to the table because we are bearing this burden quite a bit in so many ways and still not getting it solved. Be one thing if we're bearing the burden and we're, it was great, but we don't have the ability or the resources. And just to go to Councilmember Kinnear's point, I think the locations of future facilities and, and sites, that is what that board is going to do. And that, that is the point of like, oh, okay, let's do that. So I'm, I think we should move forward. My encouragement to them is to scale back a little bit, including the percentage goals until we know more. And, I mean, the way I would say it is, okay, governing board wants you there. Give us your plan and, and give us metrics. Give it to us. But I, I think it's just speculation with one caveat. You know, we collect around seven to eight million a year in 1590 right now. That's a lot of new housing units every year. If the county did it, it would be more like another 12. We'd probably be up to 20 million a year for money for new permanently affordable units. You could make a big dent if you were doing that every year. So if we can get the county to that point, I think you could get that. If you didn't get it in the 18 months, maybe 24 months. But, so, I think it's great, and I just think it's so hard to move things. They've gone so fast so far. We should continue to move forward, but just address all the concerns. Jonathan Bingle.
Just a, a couple thoughts on that. Totally agree with you. I, I appreciate their ambition. I'm an ambitious guy myself. But one of the things we know is that we're going to need to build some trust between the organizations. And this is what Houston did early, is they were like, what is a group that we can all get on board with? And it was homeless veterans, right? And everybody was on board, we're going to do 100 in 100. They met that goal, and everybody started thinking, okay, we might be able to do it, you know? We can do a similar thing. Or no, you know, no minors on the streets. We're going to make sure that no child is without a bed, right, and, and a roof. There, there are some smaller, more achievable goals that we can have right away that I think would be wise, and those are the things that we'll be advocating for, is let's start with something we all agree on, you know, because there's plenty that we're going to disagree. Nobody thinks that a kid should be without a, a bed and, and a roof. So let's start there or something else. Totally agree with you on that. It absolutely has been our message to the other jurisdictions is we're happy to share the burden, but we cannot bear the burden. And currently, the City of Spokane is bearing the burden for the region. And as much as, you know, others want to say this is a City of Spokane problem or something like that, the reason why the City of Spokane in the point in time count is going to have 78 to 80% of the homelessness is because we do have the services. If you don't have a service out in Medical Lake, it's no wonder that you don't have, you know, people saying their last permanent address was there, that it was in the City of Spokane, because this is where they're getting the help that they need. And so while the numbers might show or say or even allude to the fact that this is a City of Spokane problem, we obviously all know that that is not the case at all. I do want to give a huge thank you to Rick, Gavin, and Teresa on this. I thought they've done a great job bringing something to us, and now I know that they will be stepping back, and it is, it'll be our responsibility as a city and the, and the region to now build off of what they've given us, because I think they've given us a good platform. We can work through all those issues, and I think that we're going to be there. And I'm totally with you. I'm glad you brought it up because I forgot to talk about the loaned executives to where employees would still be funded by the City of Spokane or something. So like I said, back to your point, I think there's a lot that's really good, and I think moving forward is, is wise for us as a city. And moving forward does not mean going there without knowing what, what we need to know, but it is taking a step in that direction, so.
All right. Great conversation, and we'll encourage Rick, Teresa, and Gavin to watch this, and that way we don't have to put a letter together. All right, thanks. I'd like to invite Matt Boston up to give us council on ARPA update. We had an ARPA council workgroup meeting yesterday, covered a few things.
Yeah, thank you. This should be super quick. As you can see, it's only three slides. We met yesterday just to kind of talk about high level of where we're at, where we're going right now. Just to give a quick high level, 80, approximately $81 million in, in the award that we received, maximum revenue replacement that we can take, meaning back to the city. We got a, a pretty gracious revenue replacement calculation that we got 37 million, so nearly half that can go back to the city, of which, at this point in time, we've allocated $35.2 million back to the city. I've, I've talked about that, so I won't, I won't go into any further detail. That hasn't changed since the last discussion that we've had. $44.2 million in community support. That's programs that are supporting outside, outside services. Administrative support, that's primarily internal for temporary seasonal employees as well as some outside support that we have, the Moss-Adams contract for the eligibility review, et cetera. So just really quick project updates. That was the primary reason that I was asked to present really quick was, first and foremost is the AV upgrade bid was received by IT, and it includes updates to this briefing, or to the briefing room as well as this chambers to allow for enhanced audio and visual accessibility for Spokane and City Channel 5 and council staff. Really what that is, is just to bring us up to the era that we're in, City Channel 5 had been working with both administration and council to bring us up to speed on that. We received a bid some time ago that includes some of the conference rooms. The decision of the ARPA committee as well as administration was to say, okay, let's leave out the, the outside conference rooms and evaluate that at a later date. Let's focus on the, the chambers as well as the briefing room so that we can be holding up-to-date meetings and that. That's about 245,000. We were earmarking about 300,000 for it at the time. There, there has been no allocation, so an SBO will have to come forward to allocate those funds. Again, moving back, you can obviously see that 691,000, approximately $700,000 is unallocated at this point in time, so it would pull from that amount. Likewise, the firehouse that we had funded for $150,000 back in, oof, gosh, earlier this year, was funded, but we were attempting to get a, a vehicle to transport that firehouse from location to location so that we can educate children on the dangers of fire as well as fire safety. We did not obtain a donor vehicle, so that said, we would need another $100,000 to obviously transport the vehicle, which would as well come from that, that unallocated amount. About $100,000 needed for that at this point in time. So that had been discussed at length over the past several months, that that, that both of those were going to be not only a possibility but a probability. So that's where we're at with those two. And then just a couple of quick updates on the, on the bottom bullets there. Downtown cultural events have been fully funded after two years of pilot funding. Our original intention was to fund three years, $300,000 for three years. There was such a high demand within the first two years that that funds did get expended in those first two years, but we're leading the, the organizations that are applying for those events in those first two years towards more sustainable solutions. And that was really the primary driver around a lot of these applications that we made is to say, okay, let's get the organizations that have never applied for a grant, whether it be at the state level, the federal level, or the local level, get used to applying for a grant for, for ARPA funds, and then we can kind of handhold into state, local, and federal fund applications. LTAC is, is a great example of what we can fund those cultural events with, with, you know, obviously, a little bit of flexibility. Downtown bathrooms, amenities, and legacy business ownership, ownership transfer was part of the previous dot exercise that you did last June, last May-June, so about a year ago. Those, that was the exercise where that was kind of, those two initiatives were earmarked for the next tranche. Now, obviously, if, if you see that, that's 1.5 million. Just basic math shows you that we are, in the two bullet points above, we're taking 350,000 of the three, of the 700,000 that's available. That leaves about 350,000 left, knowing that we don't have the full funding for that. That's why that hasn't been pushed forward. But to give you a, a quick heads up, and that moves to the last bullet point there, is that the stale and failed projects that we were talking about was planning on being evaluated, and that was a discussion that was had with administration and council ARPA committee back in April that said, okay, let's, let's look at a year, a little bit over a year of contracts that have been signed, programs that have moved, RFPs that have gone out. Let's see what, what responses that we haven't got, where we missed the mark, what's not moving the way that we intended. Let's sweep back what we can sweep back and reallocate based on the needs that we have. Let's sweep back what we can sweep back and reallocate based on the needs that we have. We know that there's a lot of needs out there, so that's when that exercise is meant to come into play.
Hey, Matt?
Yeah?
Quick question?
Yeah.
So, just to be clear then, last June, so over a year ago, 13 months ago, were bathrooms, and I'm not sure what legacy business ownership transfer support is, but whatever it is, were those the two that ranked the highest and they just haven't been funded?
Yeah.
And if, okay.
They were, and the legacy, that was the education outreach for businesses where the founder wants to sell to the employees, try to help them do that.
Okay. I guess what I would say is, I think 13 months is a very long time. Priorities have changed. We're in a budget crisis. There's a lot of issues going on. Perhaps it'd be good to revisit those priorities before making some decisions.
Exactly.
And they would, in December, and frankly, in that thing, there'll be new council members, new they were. But that was, we've gone through the whole list that we came up with. Those are the last two things of the ones that met the priority.
As were the firehouse and the AV upgrades, but the bottom two, obviously, not funded because there isn't funding there. Yes?
And I hear Councilmember McCattcart, but Lavez, because capacity to really execute on those projects. There were so many others that were in line to get it written up, to go through the administration, to get it out the door, to deploy the money. So that has been a challenge too, not that they weren't important. We just didn't have the workforce to do it in a more timely fashion.
Yeah, and just to caveat that, I mean, Michelle Murray and her team have done a fantastic job at getting that money out the door over the last six to 12 months with, whether it be, you know, writing the actual RFPs or NOFA's, scoring applicants that are coming in, the customer service and the handholding that's been needed to get applicants from A to Z. It's been fantastic what they've been able to do. So that's really why we wanted to say, okay, let's look at that in December, once we get a little dust off of our shoulders from the budget that we're going to be completing this year, which we all know is going to be a heavy lift. Let's realize what money we do have left, where we missed the mark, and what priorities have changed, just to your point, and where we can allocate that money best. That's all I have.
All right, and you're going to do an SBO for those?
I am going to do an SBO. Those are going to be on July's Finance Committee.
Yeah. Okay. All right. The last thing on study session is a resolution having to do with interim department heads. And we have a version of that. There's some discussion about deferring that during our legislative session. That's not a unanimous idea on that, and there's some talk about changing the language to make it a little broader. The history, I think we all are aware of it, is that there are some charter provisions and city ordinances that require council approval for interim appointments beyond 180 days, and then a hard stop at 360 days. When we brought this up, the good news is, is that the administration has been moving some of these forward. We've approved three recently that were out of compliance, or down to two that aren't in compliance of that law. It's, because there's real people involved, it gets divisive and challenging. But we had some feedback from the administration that council intended this to keep going the way it has been going, and that we needed to take a vote to show what we thought about things. So that's the genesis of it. Happy to have questions or discuss it more. Could also wait till the legislative session and see what we're doing, or if people want to talk about them. But it's on the agenda for the legislative session immediately following this. All right, then let us go to, we're going to have an executive session on...
Question.
Oh, yeah.
We have an OPR 2023-0654. Is that our?
That's, that's in the legislative session.
It says consent, so, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it is, yeah, it is the consent agenda of a special legislative session. So we're not, but we're not there yet.
Okay.
Because we haven't done our legislative, we're still in study session.
I'm anxious.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Okay. All right. But anyway, we're going to adjourn to executive session within the study session. I'm going to say until 3 o'clock initially, and we're going to discuss potential litigation and collective bargaining negotiations.
Until 3 o'clock, did you say?
Yes.
I have a question. So, we have people here. Can we do the executive session after the legislative session, or?
Well, it's on things that are on the legislative agenda. People requested them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we do.
Okay.
Have lots of people for a daytime meeting, so appreciate your engagement. All right, so let's do that. And we'll be either back in session at 3 o'clock, or announce that we're going to extend.
Look at this.
We're not likely to take executive action, or action after the study session, but we will go into a legislative session.
City Council is extending executive session 10 minutes until 3:10 PM. No further action is expected in study session when they return, but they will adjourn into a special meeting after. City Council is extending executive session 5 additional minutes until 3:20 PM. There's no further action anticipated in the study session part of this meeting, but they will adjourn into a special legislative session afterwards.
...
City Council's executive session ended at 3:20 PM, and they are waiting to go back to study session.
All right, thanks, everybody. We're so, we're back from study session. Study session is adjourned. Thanks for every, study session is adjourned. Thanks for everybody's patience. Now, we're going to move into a special legislative session. And if you can please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Fister, could you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Caffkart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, we essentially have two orders of business. One is a consent agenda with two contracts, and the second is legislative agenda potentially with a resolution. We don't have any community con testimony requested. Not surprising since it was a special meeting and it's during the middle of the day. But Ms. Fister, if you could read the consent agenda.
OPR 2023-654 Agreement between City of Spokane and Spokane Police Guild and OPR 2023-658 Personal Services Agreement between City of Spokane and Phoenix Counseling Services LLC Spokane for Domestic Violence Screening, Treatment Assessment and Treatment from May 1, 2023 through April 30, 2024, $192,000 plus applicable tax.
All right, and we're gonna hear briefly from Garrett Jones on behalf of the city administration.
Thank you, Council President and Councils. Yes, on behalf of the administration, I just wanted to the council to recognize not only the commitment we have in our staff, but the commitment we have in our budget process for 2024. It is our commitment to look at every potential efficiency and revenue option moving forward in 2024, and it's also our commitment to hold the weekly council budget meetings that we've been having here the last couple of weeks to continue that through the rest of the budget process, to continue that positive momentum that we've been having the last couple of weeks, to come up with solutions that we can all agree on that are best for our city. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Any questions for Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Gary, appreciate that. I was just wondering, where's the mayor like today while we're dealing with this difficult topic?
I cannot answer that question, Councilmember, sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, and I know you stayed late and delayed some important responsibilities. Appreciate that, thank you. All right, any comments on consent agenda from council members? Councilmember Caffkart?
Yeah, are we, just for clarity, are we taking these together as the consent agenda? Is that the plan? Okay. Yeah, I'll just very briefly on 0654, I will just say, I think it's, it's, well, it's wonderful that we're at this point that we have a contract that we can look at and consider, and I'm happy to support this today. I think it's really important to support our officers and to ensure that we're making public safety our number one priority. I don't think there's been a question of if or whether we would pass this. It's really, the questions that we have, you know, all the time are, you know, how do we pay for the things that we're committing to? And so, I know for me, there's a lot of hard decisions that I've been making for quite a while, knowing that this vote was coming up and wanting to make sure that I was making as prudent of financial decisions on behalf of the city as I could, to be responsible in knowing that this contract was going to be before us, and I'm going to continue to do those things and look for other opportunities for some big cost savings along the way. I think that there's some need through our budget committee for extremely more detailed efforts to look for places where we can identify efficiencies, waste, fraud, abuse, just improvements in our overall budget. And so, I look forward to the opportunity to kind of pursue those efforts as well through our budget committee and working with the administration and council members on that. I think that that's going to be very needed. And there could be some other big things that we look at too, moving forward. Obviously, we've got a lot of needs beyond this contract as well, and so, we've got a lot of things that we'll have to work on in our budget. So, again, just happy to support, and I want to thank the officers who are here. I want to thank the officers who are out there right now, keeping our community safe, and the folks who are home resting and resting up so that they can get back out there to keep our community safe. So, just thank you all very much.
Before we go further, I had forgotten that I specifically invited Sergeant Duncan, or Detective Duncan, excuse me, to be here today and to share any thoughts about the contract and where we are and things like that. And so, you did come, you're dressed up, and I just wanted to invite you. We do plan on voting on this just shortly, so that you know that. And, but I did want to, you've been really hard at work on this whole process for many months, and we've really appreciated that, but I just wanted to give you a chance.
Thank you. I've gotten a chance to talk to most of you today, and I appreciate you taking the time. I've been the guild president for a year and a half now, and I know that you all see me frequently at the meetings, and the ones that I'm not at, I still do watch. And I've tried hard over the last year to change that narrative that council doesn't support its police, because that's not true. I've watched time and time again where we've had difficult conversations, and we've asked difficult questions, but extremely important questions. That does not mean you don't support the police. Considering this contract now and getting us into contract in what historically is now going to be a record time is a credit to the city saying that it supports its police. We are really, we're really hurting. We are in the middle of a staffing crisis that I think is much worse than people know. Things are rough. This gives us some hope. It gives us a path forward to start to recruit, to remind people that this is the best police department in the state. We are a very progressive police department. If you want to be a police officer, please, please come to Spokane. Great things are happening here. Really, I appreciate the work all seven of you do, I really do.
Thank you for being here and all that you do, both as an officer in the field and also your work on the guild. I think I do want to recognize that we have handled this negotiation so much better than some previous, and want to thank the whole team on that. And also, I want to just note that under the law that we passed of having our council budget director in those has really helped on the communication and expedite, and I think I'm really glad that we did that, and that everybody seemed to welcome Mr. Boston and work with that, and that went really well. So, thanks, and thanks, Mr. Boston, for that. Now, back to council commentary. Councilmember Stratton.
As a former city employee and now a council member for at least six more months, I just want to say thank you to everybody who's here today and to our police officers. I believe in our employees, whether you're a clerk or whether you're the police chief. I believe in our employees. And I dislike situations where politics or the inability to move quickly or with good leadership gets in the way, and our employees are stuck in the middle. I plan to support this. I think it's well deserved, but I do have to say that I'm disappointed that you all have had to sit and especially today, bite your nails to see what we're doing when this could have been avoided with numbers and communication with the administration. And that's my biggest regret, because at the end of the day, it's employees that have to wait to see, you know, what their contracts are going to look like, if they're going to have jobs, when they come back in the morning. So, I take this very personally, and I feel, again, very strongly for employees. And I'm just sorry that this has been, we know there are going to be budget challenges, we accept that, we'll take responsibility for that, but this could have been a lot easier on the seven of us had we have had the correct or the, or the numbers to look at this and, and, you know, think ahead a little bit. So, I will support it. Thank you all for being here, and thanks for everything you do. Many, I would say, everybody on this podium, this dais appreciates it and respects the work that you do. Thanks.
Councilwoman Wilkerson.
Thank you. I echo Councilmember Stratton and Councilmember Caffkart as well. The work y'all do, no question in my mind that you're doing a good job. And I thank Dave for coming up and speaking on behalf of the guild, and for really listening that council is on your team. We are required to ask difficult questions. That's why we were elected, to be held accountable for our actions. We're held accountable for your actions as well, and so, we need the best information that we can get to make those difficult decisions. So, it's never been about us versus them. I support the contract, always have. If I had more money, I'd pay you more money. And I understand, as an employer myself, when you're running lean, it takes a toll, and then there's diminished return, and even more so in your role as public safety officers. We get it. We were just struggling is we don't want to set you up or the city up for this financial structure that we cannot sustain. And that's what we've been wrestling with up here, is to make sure that we can honor our financial commitment to you, not only to you, but to all of our employees going forward. So, we will be working hard. I'm not going to say the road's not going to be bumpy, and there may be other things that come up that we are faced with and that we will share with you, that this is a challenge that we are facing as a community, and we will need your support to move some of these issues forward that will be coming before you. So, I thank you as well, but we're really all in this together. You do better when we do better, and then we all do better as a community. That's really all we want at the end of the day. Everybody wants to be safe, and I think everybody wants to be fairly compensated for the jobs that they have signed up to do going forward, and that goes for our police as well. So, I will be a yes vote, and I'm glad to be one.
You want to be after me so you can debate me?
I want to be after the vote.
Okay.
You don't get to talk after the vote.
No. I want to thank everybody who showed up today. Think it's important that you show up and, and show your support for, for us, the decision makers, but also for your fellow officers who couldn't be here. And I want to point out that, I'm going to echo what Councilmember Stratton, because we all have to talk, right? What she said about disappointment in that we're here at the 11th hour. We knew back in May that we had an issue with, with dollars in 2023. Our budget analyst, Matt Boston, pointed out that we were 8 million in the hole. Administration was telling us, no, no, you're 500,000 excess. That proved to be inaccurate. I, too, am very supportive of police. I was public safety chair for six years and worked closely with you all to make sure you had the tools that you needed and the support that you needed. And as Councilmember Wilkerson said, we aren't obliged to ask the tough questions because citizens ask us, and we, if we don't have the answers, there we are standing with, I'm sorry, we can't answer you because we haven't asked the questions ourselves. So, I absolutely will be supporting this, and I am grateful for each and every one of you put your lives on the line every day for us. And when I call and say, help, I want somebody to show up. So, I'm appreciative of the fact that you do put your lives on the line, that you do show up every day. We do have challenges ahead, and we're, we're going to work through them, but we have to do it together. So, and Mr. Duncan, thank you, and Mr. Schwerin, thank you for showing up. It's important that we see you and know that you're supporting us in our role as well. So, thank you.
I guess if I can't wait till after the vote, I'll jump in. But I, I just want to say, I know that there's plenty that we can all be disappointed about, but I, I don't want us to focus on that today. What I want us to focus on is the fact that today is going to be a day that we all get to celebrate, the fact that we are finally going to have a contract that moves beyond the current year that we're in. For as long as I've been involved in city politics, it has been, we're behind on the contract, we're behind on the contract, we're behind on the contract, and it is largely due to the administration and this city council here determining, we want to get ahead of this, and that cooperation between the two sides, although maybe not the rosiest cooperation, but the two sides understanding that we have a problem that we need to fix, and the coming together of this city to represent our people, and our people say that we appreciate our police, we appreciate the sacrifices they make, the long hours that they're putting in, the overtime that they're having to pick up, navigating unique social situations that we haven't seen in a very long time. All of those things are things that we are getting to say, we appreciate you, and we're putting our money where our mouth is. And I'm very excited for this vote today because it's absolutely something that has been years in the making, something coming for a very long time, and I hope that today it again does quell any, any myths about who supports who and who does what. We as a council, we're the ones who approve this agreement. We are going to be the ones who say, this is a good thing for our city, and I hope that that's going to be the message that resonates in our community and around the state and around the country, that Spokane is a place that supports its police officers. Send us the best of the best. Send us the people who want to be a part of a good department. Send us the people who want to be a part of actually making some real steps and change that the, that the country is going to be able to follow, because we are progressive in a lot of the ways that we're doing and looking at policing. And I think that Spokane has such an opportunity to see an influx of officers as we continue to get the message out, that Spokane supports its police, we're putting our money where our mouth is, and hopefully, there's more to come soon in the future. But I just want everybody in this room to know that we appreciate you. I'm so excited that today, as I hear how, how the votes are going to go, I'm so excited to hear that we're finally going to be forward in our contract. Thank you to Mr. Duncan, to the administration, to everybody who's been involved in Thank you to Mr. Duncan, to the administration, to everybody who's been involved in this, the the hours of conversations. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Tanya. Thank you, everybody who's been working these things out. I think today is a great day for the city of Spokane, and I'm excited for what the next few years have to bring for for us and our department. So thank you all.
Councilmember Oppone?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Detective Duncan, coming and dispelling any myths that might be out there that council's not supportive of the police. I think we have shown that we're unanimous in supporting our officers and excited about this contract. I'm a union member for teachers, and I know, actually, I've never operated out without outside a contract. And so it would be incredibly terrifying on a day-to-day basis to not know your standard working conditions. And so I hope to see a morale boost there, knowing and predicting your working conditions for the next few years. I think the timing of this is frustrating, and that council's also been unanimous about how frustrating this is because we are all fiscally responsible, and that is our duty is to be fiscally responsible. And we've been asking and asking and asking the mayor and the administration for months about what are we going to do because we have a structural problem in our budget. In fact, we tried to have a joint study session on March 30th that the mayor canceled the day before because she did not want to have a discussion about what we have to do, which is either make cuts or increase revenue because we have a structural problem with homelessness, with all the labor contracts. We have a lot of issues with our budget, and we can't raise enough revenue, and we have to have that frank conversation. So I'm glad to hear Mr. Jones make a commitment from the administration to have those conversations. We have to do that very quickly because if we're going to go to voters and ask them for more revenue, we have to do that by August 1st. So we have to do this conversation quickly. And it's frustrating because we've been asking for it for months. So I'm glad to see that there's a commitment there, and I'm glad to be supporting our Guild and our officers.
Any other comments? All right. I too want to add my thanks to everybody who came down to the meeting and for your service. Particularly, several of you come here every Monday night and try to keep things orderly here in challenging circumstances. And I personally appreciate that. And I've encountered many of you out on the streets of Spokane doing your job, keeping our city safer, and again, working under very challenging circumstances. Nobody a few years ago really would have imagined our situation with public safety and the number of staff, the morale, just different things that are going on. And we are all the people here, together, committed to making that work. So thanks for being partners in that. And our commitment is to continue to be partners with you. So thank you for that. I again, as I mentioned earlier, I thought this negotiation agreement process was far superior to anything I've seen in the last seven years on the council, and thank everyone for that. And I also wanted to commend Mr. Jones for saying publicly that the administration is committed to actually grappling with these issues of revenue enhancements. And if we can't get the revenue enhancements and appropriate budget cuts until we get not 2023, I think we're super close on 2024. We're not. And there's no one contract or one expenditure or one area of the general fund departments that is the fault of kind of a fiscal cliff in 2024. But it does exist, and all the things come together. And you just happen to be talking to us when we're in the middle of doing our mid-year budget corrections. Thanks to Councilmember Cathcart and Wilkerson for bringing that process forward. So we're doing that now until the end of the year, when we have fewer options. But we are looking ahead, and our understanding is that it's going to be very challenging. It's not just going to be on the fringe, on the edges, that we're probably going to need to ask the voters to vote with their pocketbooks for the entire city operation to be provide them the service that they expect and want. I'm confident that we can provide them the best package possible that's clear and transparent and give them a choice, whether they want to continue and or expand services or have fewer services. And it's challenging. Nobody likes to make those choices. But it's really all of the job, the administration job and the council, to be straightforward with the voters on that. And so I look forward to seeing and hearing, hopefully publicly, proposals from all sides. Earlier this year, we were looking at homeless services, and when the tide really shifted was when we went to the commitment to put every potential option on the table and not have any sacred cows or anything that we weren't willing to talk about. And that worked well. We came up with a solution for the track shelter by doing that that we didn't have. And I hope that carries forward. And my sense is that we have a working agreement with the administration to do that, and including in the next few weeks, look at potential revenue enhancements that would go on a November ballot. As Councilmember Oppone mentioned, we would have to vote as a council by the end of July to put something, a choice for voters on the ballot in November. And the benefit of doing that, even though it's an election year, is that we will then know the answer of the voters before we finalize the budget at the end of November. So I just want to also say just thanks for your patience as we go through this process. Transparency and accountability are challenging, especially in the public sector. But I think we're all committed to that. So with that, I would ask people just it's a voice vote, but all those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Any abstentions? All right. That passes unanimously. As Justice for all would say, you're out of order. So I'm going to hold you. And Mr. Flynn, Mr. for all, you're out of order. But certainly understand the sentiment. We have one other resolution potentially on it on the agenda, 0051. But before that gets read, is there any motion on that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to defer that until the next legislative session.
Second.
Do we have a date?
It's whenever. It might be next Thursday. It might be the 10th. It'd be the 10th at the latest, but it might be next Thursday.
I would say we're trying to rework it to incorporate all the interims that are out of compliance with both the city charter and SMC. So we're trying to work on it. So it's not just one individual person, but all positions.
Any other discussion on the motion to defer to the next legislative session? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Any abstentions? All right. That is deferred. That brings us to the end of our meeting today. Thanks, everyone. Please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. We are adjourned.